0.071 of the Texas Government Code, this meeting may be convened in closed executive session for the purposes of seeking confidential legal advice from the city attorney on any item on the agenda at any time during the meeting. The City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or called executive session, or order of business at any time prior to adjournment. It's 6:30 and we are called to order. This evening, we are honored to have girl power in the House Council. We have, and as I say your name, if you would stand, come forward and turn around and face the audience so they know who I'm talking about. We have Sienna Salinas, she is going to be in the 4th grade. We have Alicia Wallace, and Alicia is going to be in the 5th grade. We have Samantha Wallace, Samantha's going to be in the 3rd grade. We have Isabella Harris, she'll be in the 4th grade. And Cameron Tucker, and Cameron's going to be in the 3rd grade. And these girls, as you can see, are all set for the Patriotic Festival coming up, and we are thrilled to have them with us tonight. And ladies and gentlemen, if you will please rise, we will be saying the Pledge of Allegiance to both flags. Girls, if you'll turn around and face the flag, and you can lead us.
(Patriotic singing) I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and individual.
Wait, can we get this everybody, all the city council and everybody in there? We want this on their resumes.
And ladies and gentlemen, if you will remain standing, Kyle Adams, who is the youth pastor at River Valley, will lead us in our invocation tonight. Pastor Adams?
Thank you. Let's pray. I mean, I'm just, first and foremost, I'm just thankful to live in Bastrop, and just a beautiful city, and I'm just so grateful to be here, thankful for these men and women who lead. And Father, I pray that as they meet tonight, that you would give them wisdom and guide them, and just in their leadership. And just as they move forward to lead a great city, to lead a great city in unity, and just with peace and unity as we come together. Father, again, I just pray that you would just guide them, lead them, as they make these decisions in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Adams, appreciate that very much. We have one, we have one presentation tonight, but it's going to be after our report, so I think the first item on the first report that we'll go to under Presentations 4A is Mayor's Report. I don't know who has the clicker. There, okay. And while we're on this page, a couple of things I want to talk about. We are going to have our very first Boards and Commission Fair, and it is going to be on July 17th from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. Each of the 13 city boards will be represented, and I heard earlier today that we have 20 nonprofits that are also going to be participating. You will get a letter, everybody will get a newsletter in the mail that will be mailed to your home. We're hoping it's going to go out around July 1st, so hopefully about a week from Friday, everybody should have hold of that. It's going to give you an opportunity, if you'd like to serve on a board, if you'd like to volunteer for a one-time event, everything in between, you'll have opportunities to check that out. So if you would please save that date, July 17th from 7:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. The way that'll work is, we'll have a new application that should also be ready about July 1st, and we'll take all those applications before the fair, during the fair, and then council is going to interview the folks that apply for the city boards, and we'll do some interviews, and then we'll make appointments, and we'll make them in time that the boards will have new board members as we have a new fiscal year, and we'll get everybody on the same page. So just a reminder, I've mentioned this a couple of different times, but for all of our boards, people are, will continue to serve until they're replaced. So there's some folks that thought they were going to roll off in May, but they'll be with us till October. With that, the next page, you'll get an idea of some of the fun things I did between June 2nd and June 14th. We had our senior center luncheon, and tomorrow, we're going to have the ribbon cutting there at the FEMA shelter that's also serving as the senior center. In the middle of the page, Library Rocks. It took off on June 2nd, there were over 300 people participating. The picture at the top has all those little yellow dots, those were all the wings of the Library Rocks people that had signed up for the summer reading program. So if you haven't already done that, I would encourage you to do that. It was a lot of fun, and the Library Rocks continued today with the big game day over at the convention center, and they were hoping for 300 people, and apparently, they got there at about 10 after 1:00. So I haven't heard the final head count, but playing inside the convention center in the air conditioning turned out to be a really great thing to do. It was 104 degrees when I came back from there this afternoon. We also had the art reception. There's a picture of some of our great helpers, and one of the winners that we announced, the YMCA's been having safety items on Monday, this particular Monday, that is the real Smokey the Bear that you see in that picture, and he came and talked to the kids. Couple of ribbon cuttings there, the sheriff, county sheriff had a new break area that we did a ribbon cutting. Lads Coins and Jewelry is inside Craig's Jewelry. And the community support group, the BPNL has a community support, and you hear us talk about the people that we give money to. And last year, when we gave them money, one of the things that we asked them to do was to come and get together with us quarterly to review the things that they were doing to so that we could build those partnerships. For a nonprofit to be successful, it's not always about writing a check. A lot of times, it's about communication and getting some other people involved. And that great group of people represent several of the nonprofits in the area, and I was just really glad to get that picture of all of them. The upper left-hand corner was the last month's Chamber After Hours event that was held at Old Town. So did a lot of fun things during the first couple of weeks of June. We, between June 15th and tonight, we did the Juneteenth banquet. I think there were, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 of the 7 of us were at the Juneteenth banquet, which was great. We did the Juneteenth parade, the emancipation program. I know the Blue Flame Cruiser's Car Show was a success. Can't say it, but I know it was a success, and I'm sure Councilmember Peterson's going to want to visit about that. They had the street dance Saturday night, Father's Day. We held a special council workshop last Tuesday, and it's some items that came up in that meeting that we're going to talk about some more in a little bit. I was also, we came so close, we had 5 of us at the TML Region 10 meeting in Round Rock, and if, gentlemen, I think if we had been at 6, we could have tied, and at 7, we could have won the attendance award for Region 10, but we were definitely a strong showing there. But we had a joint meeting with Visit Bastrop, and then on Saturday night, I went to the Leatherneck Banquet for the, they had their state convention, and that was just a really great event to be at. And as I mentioned earlier today, I was at big games. For things that are going on between now and the next council meeting, that Texas Housing Foundation meeting was going to be held in our council chambers tomorrow morning, but that is canceled. But as I mentioned, there is a ribbon cutting at the FEMA shelter, and on Thursday, the Firestone that's there at 95 in Chestnut, they'll have their ribbon cutting. Friday is the best breakfast, and then Friday and Saturday, we have the Patriotic Festival, and we're going to be visiting about that a little bit more. July 4th, remind everyone that city offices will be closed next Wednesday, July 4th, and it's already the first of the month, so it'll be Farm Street Opry and the Fresh Friday Art Walk, and the swing dance is red, white, and you swing dance, and that'll be at the convention center. So if you like to swing dance, want to learn how to swing dance, or know anyone that swing dances, you might mention that to them, and then it'll be July 10th in time for us to be at the council meeting. So with that, we'll move on to item 4B. Councilmember Jones, do you have anything to report?
I was not at the Juneteenth celebration, and I'm very sorry about it, but I was honored with a caucus position, and it was really interesting. I've never done that before, and it was a big deal, and I personally don't consider myself any party. I consider myself an American, and I'm pretty sick of all the division, and there's a whole lot of good people in both parties. And I was reminded by that with an article that was published in The Statesman. It was a commentary by one of the editorial contributors, and he commented about how the Democratic and the Republican Parties worked together to raise money in Smithville for a community garden, I think is what it was, and how nice it was to actually see people working together. And oddly enough, there was a tremendous amount of backlash about that event from people who were angry that they were working together and not out fighting for votes, and pretty surprised. I was really, really surprised to see that kind of commentary, and the point I'm trying to make is, I think there's a lot of people, and I can say that for this council, people that volunteer a huge amount of time, and you're fixing to hear all about that. And it gets old, the people that want to complain, the people that want to give us a hard time, the people that are negative, the people that don't want to be supportive, that would rather complain versus being on a committee, or being on a, I think we have our volunteer, what's that called, Connie, you have that?
Volunteer fair, it's on July 17th.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think it would be a really positive step for people to move forward and look at maybe joining a committee instead of being negative and unkind and ugly. And, but that's my comment, that's my takeaway, is that I realize that at a state level, it's worse than it is at a local level, and it's even worse at a federal level. And I think those of us who are in the middle, who are working towards a solution, I think that we need to do what we can to bring people together, and I can say for myself, that on this council, we may have disagreements, but one thing that we do is we respect each other, and I think that's why this is such a good council and such a strong council, and why we're going to be ready to make really tough decisions to move forward for the city. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Jones. Councilmember Anis?
Thank you, Mayor. Outside of the, some of the things that I joined you on in attending, I attended the Main Street Board Meeting this week, this week, 2 weeks ago, and they're working hard, they're working hard for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Anis. Mayor Proctor Nelson?
It was hard to attend, to participate in some of the events over the past month with the mayor and some of the members of the council. I do want to note, this is 177th day of 2018, and the mayor's attended 174 events. That shows participation.
I thought I'm short 3. Thank you. I was offended you were saying, I owe you 3 more events.
I wasn't done.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Proctor Nelson. Councilmember Rogers?
Well, I just wanted to say to the council, because we had a retreat Friday and Saturday, and I want to thank you guys for taking the time to explain things to me and bringing me up to date when I was a new person on. That was a good, strong 2 days, so I just wanted to tell you thank you, because most of the other events you talked about, I was already there, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Councilmember Peterson? You have to say Blue Flame Car Creators Fest.
Blue Flame Car and Motorcycle Club. But anyway, excuse me. I attended with the mayor, with the council members, we attended the Region 10 Conference, TML Conference in Round Rock. I can truly say that I'm really, it was a good meeting, and I really loved that park. I wish we could do something like that here. They had a beautiful All Abilities Park, is what they call it, and it was an outstanding park, an outstanding venue in Round Rock. I thoroughly enjoyed that. And with that, I want to thank the mayor for coming down, and the rest of the council members that competed, that came down to the Juneteenth festivals, the mayor with the proclamation to all the Juneteenth participants, and it was a really good Juneteenth weekend to include the car show. We had approximately 80 cars registered, and a lot of the cars showed up, and just to do that for support. But I want to thank everyone, everyone you see for their support of the Juneteenth festivals and the car show. So, but thank you, thank you very much.
Councilmember Peterson, we want to thank you for all of your hard work, because that car show was a ton of work, and very much appreciated. Several people in the community, if you didn't go, you need to make a point of going next year. I do want to say real quickly, we've all referenced TML. TML stands for Texas Municipal League, and it is an organization that is made up of all several municipalities that agree to participate in that organization. And what we've enjoyed about it, it's really great to get a chance to talk to other mayors and have council members talk to other council members. There's some people who've been on council for a long time, and people who've just gotten on a council, and you find out as often when you visit with other people, that they've had similar problems, or maybe dealing with similar problems, and it's great to get another perspective. So really, it was a long way to Round Rock, but it was a great facility, and it was well worth the drive. Okay, with that, we are moving on. Oh, I'm sorry, City Manager, do you have anything to report? We are on 4D, Presentation Regarding the Closure of the Old Iron Bridge on June 29th through, and I think it's now going to be July 1st, but we will let Mr. Job speak to that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First off, if you flicked the staff report, just to go over something real quick. Again, you have a picture of the bridge. We've done multiple inspections, but from 2014, I'm going to answer a few questions that I've got over social media, let me explain that first. So people are saying, what's the matter with the bridge? What's the problem with the bridge? We just have a few quick pictures here, and I think you'll get the idea real quick what's the matter with the bridge. But we've done previous inspections from '92 all the way to 2011. We did another one in 2014 that was a lot more in-depth. And what you came away with was the stuff that you couldn't see, and there was some small cracking in the decking area. There's another picture of that, the lower portion of the deck. Some of the superstructure, you can see rust, you can see pinning on the concrete. Again, some of the superstructure, a lot of rust, a lot of deteriorated metal. Another picture of the same thing. Really big picture of some deterioration. And what all that resulted in, if you look at these pictures, was a score that basically the deck was in poor condition, the substructure underneath the concrete area was in fair condition, but the overall condition of the bridge is just in that satisfactory fair range. So what that came down to was basically a 85 pounds per square foot rating per person. And if you take those 192-foot section spans of bridge, that's about 165 to 170 people on the actual spans of the truss. So you have the other ends that are on the, over the ground, you could add additional people, but instead of expand, using the resources up to make sure that there's only 162 people in one spot at a certain time, we thought it'd be best to disclose the bridge, just in a bunch as a caution. It will be open again to the running public, like the mayor, so. And the hours, just to give you a little more clarity on that, because there was also some concern on social media about the length of the bridge, should be closed? So the 29th, it's the first night of the Patriotic Festival, and it runs from 6 to midnight. And we will close that bridge sometime in between the 29th and the 30th, which is why we've covered all 3 days. But you'll technically only be affected the 30th. So probably from about the morning of the 30th, 8:00 a.m. at the latest, till midnight that night, and then we'll be open completely, since we have some staff coming in anyway for July 1st. So you only have actually 1 day that you're affected, and everybody can get back to running on the bridge, or going back and forth and enjoying the trail system.
I thought we were going to close it Friday night, we're not? We're going to close it Saturday?
We'll close it that Friday, Saturday morning. There shouldn't be any traffic on the bridge Friday nights, but we'll do it while we're at the Patriotic Festival. So that's where that window is at, does that make sense?
No.
Okay, so Friday.
So what time Friday can people expect the bridge to be, it's going to be closed by 5, it's going to be closed at 6, it's going to be closed at noon?
It will not be closed until late that evening, early until Saturday.
Late that evening, okay.
Until early, so it'll be open all that day.
Somewhere between 10:00 p.m. and midnight.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
So that's about the time that all the stuff starts to wind down. Well, it's still 2 days, which is.
Okay, so 10:00 p.m. Friday to, for all practical purposes, 10:00 a.m. Sunday-ish.
Yes, that sounds good. And again, we just have some suggestions on where you can watch the fireworks, there's lots of folks who like to gather on the bridge. So you can see it from anywhere in the river if you decide to float. Fisherman's Park's still got lots of extra room, we'd love to have you. The library's a great spot. Anywhere along the June probably Riverwalk, and then there's some vacant lots along the corner that the city actually owns in front of the police station, the dog park, that area, great area, good trees. You can play Pissed Stretch out, get a blanket, and watch the fireworks.
So Trey, just a couple of comments, and make sure I'm telling the truth. Once we got this study back in 2014, we haven't allowed, we've only allowed city vehicle very sparsely, but we, like, I know they've done a bunch of filming, we don't allow film crews and things on the bridge based on the study.
That is correct. We will absolutely close it to large crowds now.
You mentioned that I do sometimes run, some would say walk, but it's my version of jogging and running. And I do that now, and I will do that after the bridge is open again.
Correct.
A few people is not what our concern is.
Correct.
Concentrated, lots of people, then it starts getting.
When you get excited about the fireworks, and everybody jumps up and down, there's a lot of oscillation that starts on the bridge, and things start to move and creak. That's what we want to prevent from happening, but just the average, small, petite runner like yourself, you're not even going to make a dent. You're just going to.
No need to suck up to the mayor, Trey, it's not necessary.
Good job.
The, we aren't going to allow car traffic, it's an abundance of caution, but knowing what's going on underneath, and it's very important for the public to know if they didn't watch the budget workshop, that this council nodded yes, and we have every intention of putting some money towards fixing that bridge.
Yes.
We all understand that it's an iconic bridge, we want to keep that bridge, but it's going to take some time.
Absolutely, yes, perfect.
Council, do you have any questions?
I do. Yes, ma'am. Since you've mentioned that we're all very interested in fixing the bridge, because it's kind of been kicked down the road several times because of the cost, and we've decided that we now, it can't be kicked anymore, what kind of timeline, can you just throw a general timeline? Because I know people are probably going to be curious, what does that look like if we fix that ri, is that 5 years? Is it a year and a half? I mean, what, can you, anybody comment on that?
I can give you an estimated, guesstimation, I guess, if you want to call it that.
How about you don't, and let's answer it this way. We identified last week, when we were visiting and interviewing engineering firms, we identified one of the firms that's going to be on the preferred vendor list, has a structural engineer on staff, and we pledged as soon as you approved that list on the 10th, that we would schedule a meeting with that structural engineer that week in order to build that timeline and begin to figure out how to fund the debt. Because if you remember, we talked about we would be selling debt, and if we can get it done in 1 year, we'll sell all of it, but if we hear from them that it's going to take 24 months or whatever, then we will structure the debt appropriately. So the long answer to a short answer is, when we bring that back to you in August as a part of your budget, we will fully be prepared to answer that with factual information.
Thank you so much for answering that question, that was a really good answer, yeah. What did you say, Trey?
That's exactly what I was going to say.
That's exactly what Trey was going to say.
Perfect, thank you.
She's a mind reader.
That's right.
Yeah, so the, the point to the public is, it's not, we have this thing, we're aware of it, and we're taking this step, but we're not going to do this, to Councilmember Jones's point, we are, every intention of doing the second step.
Yes.
But to the city manager's point, we've got to have good data to make a good decision.
Yes, and before this, there wasn't the debt capacity, but it's here now, and now it's time to make our move, and I think everybody's on board, and it's a good thing.
Okay. And I know that Chief Altgeld will be making, Public Works is going to close the bridge, Chief Altgeld and his staff will be making sure that people abide by that.
That's correct.
But let's not waste Chief Altgeld's time, we can just go watch the fireworks somewhere else. That's not what we want to remember about the weekend.
Absolutely.
Plenty of fun things to do, encourage you to go to Fisherman's Park. Councilmember Jones, you're happy? Everybody else, any questions? Okay.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to be clear, that this council is planning on doing something, because the option of not doing something is not there.
That's correct, that's correct.
Thank you, Mayor Proctor Nelson. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Job.
Thank you.
That's the end of our presentations, and we have no work sessions and briefings. I apologize, I didn't do this earlier, I did want to announce that item 9A for individual consideration, item 9A is pulled, so if you happen to be in the audience because you're interested in 9A, it is pulled. Okay, we are moving on to staff and board reports. Item 6A, receive monthly report from Visit Bastrop. Mr. Lockett?
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Thanks to the opportunity last week that we had to spend a few hours together, I think that we got some great input about future presentations and what we're going to be looking for. Unfortunately, this presentation had been put together in the same format, so I apologize that we don't have the changes that you asked for for this one, but you will have for the July. In addition to July, you'll have a financial report that will be included as part of the public package as well. So all of that was very beneficial. I appreciate the extra effort and the time and the commitment that the council has made into the hospitality industry, your support that you've given to Visit Bastrop as we are in embryonic stage starting up, and so we'll go through an abbreviated report since we did quite a bit last week. So as we, oh, I have a control. Do I have a clicker?
Ms. Franklin does, but you can get the clicker from her if you'd like.
I trust you. So on the first slide that we have is the infamous occupancy that we spent quite a bit of time saying. So there's only really 2 numbers, Bastrop, the 6.9% increase. If you remember the April report that we presented last week, was our first decrease in this fiscal year, or pardon me, in this calendar year. And so it's nice to see a rebound back up at 6.9. Year-to-date, our hotels, which only include the hotels in the Bastrop city limits, does not include the Hyatt Regency Resort, is up 6.6% in occupancy. That means we have more people staying in our rooms this year than we did the previous year. The numbers, the 1 through 9, are simply comparative, and we will be changing some of those. As you may remember, we have in that comparative Austin, San Antonio, to give us an idea of how the big destinations are doing in terms of draw. And as a reminder, we are prohibited from publicly identifying who these are. Some of them by the room rates, you can kind of get a guess of what their average daily rate, that it might be one of the larger destinations there. But we also have small comparative destinations, Fredericksburg is in there, Lano is in there, and others, to give us an idea, San Marcos, to give us an idea of how more comparable small destinations are doing. And if you'll notice, on year-to-date, we're trending fairly favorably in most of the indicators there. So that is just an overall health of our lodging industry for Bastrop. The next slide will show a chart that will be changed dramatically for the next one, but it just simply is a graph that shows the decrease in April with the increase in May, up to 6.8%, and gives you an idea of where we are year-to-date. The next slide also will be changed. We realize that we're not reporting the complete picture on the convention center generation with room nights that it has brought into the city, so that uh, generation with room nights that it has brought into the city, uh, so that will be changed. And we are taking a bit of a reset and question and discovery in regards to Visit Bassdrop's role with conventions and meetings. Um, it, we have a unique situation here, and, uh, so the board and executive committee, uh, are working to talk about how we go about the future of representing Bassdrop for meetings and conventions, and we will come back to this, uh, group in terms of our plan of work for the next fiscal year and the budget for the next fiscal year, and explain our findings on that. The next slide will show, uh, some of the activities on our convention sales initiatives. The L&amp;H Productions is a potential rodeo, um, bull riding event that we're looking at trying to bring into the rodeo facility here in Bassdrop. Hope to have, um, news on, uh, whether or not we've been successful in bringing that from another destination here. On the next slide, it gets into our metrics for marketing. We spent quite a bit of time last week on how to read these charts. Um, this is just simply the health of our website, 5,000 users, of those 4,814 were new users, which is really important, is showing the growth of that. The next page, um, shows what's driving the attraction, the, obviously, we have the music festival and promoting that very aggressively on social media as well as other advertising. So addition to the homepage, the Bassdrop Music Festival is one of the most used page, uh, along with the play page, and what was nice to see was Hyatt On-Site Activities, which shows that our website, people are going to our website to find out about what the Hyatt offers, which is very important to us, you know, in regards to their contribution to our hospitality industry. Um, the green dots there are all, uh, good news in terms of, um, performance against national averages. Uh, so in, in, anytime we see a yellow or a red dot that's gonna get our attention, it 'll drive staff to make some changes on SEO, search engine optimization, and other activities that could influence that. So that's good news. Other good news, just look at the all sessions. Uh, you're seeing a nice trend rate, uh, there for all the sessions, uh, that, uh, we went into a roll in January, it came back up February, trending good March, April, and especially in May. Some of this other information, um, is where we're getting our interest from. And here's what's interesting, uh, at first, Bassdrop did not show up hardly at all in the use of our website, um, which is okay, because our focus is to bring people from outside of Bassdrop into Bassdrop. But it also is a very, um, effective and in-depth, uh, resource tool that we believe should be used by our local citizens, and so we're seeing now that Bassdrop is rating number three. Houston is number one, Austin, Bassdrop, San Antonio, and Dallas. So that's a nice mix. It's showing that we're pulling from the regional markets, which has been our focus, um, to pull in, and also some improved usage by our local citizens, um, to, uh, use the website as a resource. The next slide, uh, again, shows organic sessions. Organic is where people search for fun things to do, exciting things to do, art, culture, uh, sports. They don't specifically type in Bassdrop. It's not driven by an ad, and we show up onto their search engine optimization there. So that's the important one there. This one will probably go away because it's just too much detailed information. It's important to us as staff that we know who is looking at us, the gender, the age group, the spend capability, et cetera, but for this purpose, it's just way too much information. Nice to know, uh, but we will be revising that. And this Facebook overview, um, shows, uh, some really good, uh, information and shows some of the volatility, you know, that we have in social media. If you remember, in April, we were down, uh, about 30% in Facebook posts. This month, we're up 51%. It's tied to the activity and the events in the community by and large, when we can send out highly curated, uh, posts, meaning that curated is that they're supported with video, they're supported with great detailed information, great photography, trying to drive the demand and the desire, uh, to the destination. Next slide, uh, this one will go away as well. This is just some of the detail information. What you can get from it is when we do a boosted post, most of the time boosted posts perform better than the non-boosted posts. This, again, this is internal documentation for us to be able to, uh, refine our marketing efforts. Next slide, it shows some of our strategic... There we go, strategic marketing initiatives. So you know that we were engaged with Bassdrop Music Festival. We also have been involved very, um, um, in-depth with the patriotic festival, very excited about what the chamber did to improve the opportunities for enticing out-of-town visitors to come here, the addition of the skydiving, some of the different entertainment activities. A lot of the family-friendly activities and events, the water park, things like that, are things that we can get our hands around and our ideas around about promoting why Bassdrop is gonna be a great place to come, uh, this coming Wednesday, uh, coming weekend, sorry. And then, of course, branding is underway, and I would encourage you, if you didn't check your emails today, counsel, you have been, uh, outreach by Augustine Agency, uh, to get your input into the branding, um, and would encourage you to try to set some time to do that call, uh, with Augustine. We're very excited about that, because that will enable us to move from event marketing into destination marketing. We'll be able to go into brand campaign, and we'll identify what our brand promise is for the community and be able to augment. We'll still promote festivals, they're very important, uh, to give, uh, the opportunity to draw people here. But we'll also be promoting the essence of what Bassdrop is, and we're, can't wait to see some of that information that comes out on that. One of the things we promised you, um, this was basically the marketing overview, uh, billboards that were up on the music festival. Next slide. This is some of our magazine, uh, exposure that we received, uh, Austin Monthly, San Antonio Magazine, and the Texas Music Magazine, and, uh, it's hard to see on the slides, but it shows you some of the double-page layouts that we received in these publications. But probably what's most important is, while we'll lead into that, this is just some more social media activities that we did for, uh, the, um, uh, music festival. And the next slide is probably what you're most interested in. This is the details that we have to date in terms of how the event performed. So the estimated lifespan, pre-sales, about 1,200, 800 were purchased, 400 were promotional, walk-up tickets, about 400 for the total event. Hotel rooms used by band and production teams, estimated to be 50 rooms, room nights. Conservative estimates of attendee room nights were also about 50 room nights. Print ad reach, Texas Music Magazine, Austin Monthly, San Antonio, about 914,000. Social media potential reach, through all the social media, uh, you know, through Bassdrop Music Festival, the magazine, and individual band promotions to go to their followers was about another 747,000 people. And then our overall social media potential reach was a million point one. What this gave us was a potential reach and exposure to 3.7 million, um, viewers that were, uh, both, uh, in the state of Texas and outside of the state of Texas. So it gave us some national exposure. And the room nights generated, uh, about $9,000 in room nights that were generated.
So it begs the question, how much did we spend?
We spent 68, uh, oh, sorry, $72,000 for that one. So the $72,000 bought the billboards, bought the magazine ads, bought, uh, the, the, uh, social media promotion and marketing, uh, for that. So the way that I look at it, uh, you look at it, uh, I would suggest that we look at it in both ways. It was a media buy, because the promoter and producer of the event was able to bring exposure, uh, through publications to the destination, as well as an event. So out of that 70,000, uh, way we broke it out was about $15,000 we, uh, attributed to, uh, event production. Now, I got a real fly that's, that's interested in me. About $15,000 for the actual cost of the event production, and then, uh, uh, about $55,000 for the ad buys. Uh, so from the ad buys, you look at it from the reach that you get, did we get the reach that we wanted? We certainly got a great reach. Um, we would like to see improvement in the number of attendees that came. On any given day, we think we had about 1,000 people that were here for that. The feedback that we got, uh, from most of our venues that were involved was that they saw a different crowd that maybe didn't see more people per se, because they're limited on capacity, but they saw a different crowd of people. And what our hopes are on that is that the word of mouth starts generating. Those people will go on their Facebook post and say what a great time and a great experience that they'll have, and it'll start exponentially building. We can't track that, but that's what our hope is, and that's what we, uh, believe will have happened. So next slide is, this is what our, uh, marketing for the patriotic fest, objective, build awareness, that this is a yearly summertime event, and encouraging overnight stay and spending at the local level. Um, again, I credit the Chamber of Commerce for really stepping up this year, um, and we have joined in partnership with them to try to promote it. So we're very excited about what the opportunity is for this weekend. I encourage everybody to go out and have a great, great time this weekend. Uh, it will be definitely worth your while. And yes, we can find real great spots to watch the fireworks for them. I'm, I'm fully convinced of that. Uh, so that should not be an issue. Uh, so how did we reach them? We did outdoor, digital banner ads, social media radio, and print ads. In fact, Texas Monthly just put out a boosted post that reached over 117,000 people, uh, today. Uh, so we are actively and aggressively promoting that. Next slide. This just shows some of the patriotic festival. We did gas pump toppers that also has some local impact as well to expose what's happening. And then, of course, anybody that's local that drives Highway 71, they'll see the billboards, but it's mainly intended for those that don't live here, that drive up and back every day. And the theory and the concept behind that is simply, we're trying to establish Bassdrop as a great place where things that are exciting happen, not just home from time to time, but a lot of time. And the campaign that the branding is going to enable us to go to, Bassdrop is a great place to come every single day out of the year. So that's our report, and I'll stand for any questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Lockett? Councilmember Rogers?
I did have a question on your Facebook slide. I don't know how many slides back it is.
Might have, he already passed it, I think.
Yeah, we'll go forward one, I think. So when you look at your, oh, yeah. Okay. Well, I don't know where I'm at now.
One more couple. There you go.
So when you look at how many likes we have, but we got almost just as many unlikes. What is that? You know what I'm saying? See what I'm saying?
Yes.
We got 139 likes, and then we got 126 unlikes, so we're losing them as much as we're gaining them. Is that what that means?
No, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't look at it that way. What a unlike means is that, and again, go back to the number of, of total, um, activity that we're getting, and some people will just say they're not interested in what we're saying right now, so they will unlike that. Um, it, it did not raise, uh, an issue in our metrics.
Mm-hmm.
And so it's fairly common that you will gain a lot, you'll lose some, because people, "Oh, I've been there, I've done that, and I'm not interested in receiving this information" in the future. Uh, we definitely are concerned about it, but it is not, I, I, there's not a lot we can do about it. Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. Any other questions, counsel? Thank you, Mr. Lockett.
Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on on the agenda to item 6B, receive presentation on the unaudited comprehensive monthly financial report for the period ending May 31st, 2018. And we have Margaret Silbernagle, and she wants us to ask her a million questions. She's really looking forward to this.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, I am Margaret Silbernagle, standing in for Ms. Waldron this evening, and we have our, uh, unaudited, um, comprehensive financial report for the month of May. And overall, we're trending positive. Uh, we have our, um, performance at a glance, and you see everything is, is doing very well. And we can, next slide, and again, more detail, you have all this in your packet, so, uh, feel free to look through here, let me know if you have any questions. Uh, we go next. Um, okay, so our budget of all funds, we have all of our funds from general, um, all of our, uh, service funds. Again, trending very positive. Uh, okay, we can go to the next. Uh, and our expenses, again, we're below budget, um, overall. Uh, we're doing, again, positive trending. And, uh, we move on to, uh, revenues and expenses. The blue you'll see is revenue, the red is expenses. Um, again, we're positive on our comparison with revenues and expenses there. And the next slide, here we have a sales tax, or let's go back on sales tax. We have been, um, above our, um, forecast for sales tax so far this year, so, again, doing pretty well on that. And then we have our property tax on next slide. Uh, of course, we have more, uh, December and January, so it's leveled off quite a bit, uh, for the rest of the year. Again, we're doing well. And so our water wastewater, we have revenues, um, compared to expenses. Uh, we're doing well here for the month, and, um, here's our revenue compared to forecast. Again, we're doing quite well, um, and close. Uh, and then we'll look at our electric revenues versus expenses. And next, we have our electric revenue comparing our forecasted to our actual.
Margaret?
Yes.
Both on electric and on water wastewater, we see that our expenditures are what, are much below what was forecasted, and I see in the note that it says, um, capital projects haven't been expensed yet. I just want to confirm, are they going and they haven't been expensed yet, or are there some capital projects that are gonna push out of the...
We do have capital projects in, uh, process of, I think, what some of them are, of course, we have different amounts at different times of the year. Um, so without, you know, looking into exactly what the detail is, a lot of times our expenses don't show up until sometimes the next month. So by the time we get to the end of the year, we should, of course, see a more complete picture.
The answer to your question is yes and yes.
Okay, so that we, okay, so Linda's saying that, um, some of the projects are under it, like we know the 16-inch water line. There's some projects that are underway, but there may be some stuff that pushes, and I will, so I guess, um, city manager, where as we work towards next year's budget, we'll have a true up of what has to push or whatever?
Um, yes, ma'am. What will typically happen in a situation like that is a capital fund will be set up for each of the projects in the respective funds, and we will, um, account for them that way. Uh, one of the things in our work plan next year that we talked about was establishing the CIP. One of the things that the CIP will show you is the individual projects in each of these funds that you don't get the detail on at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, and we move on to next, and then we have our hotel, um, occupancy, tax, revenues versus expenses. This is a little uneven during the year, uh, depending on when, uh, we have some of our funding requests. And, uh, next slide, and, um, there's our tax revenue, which is trending, again, rather positive. And, um, a lot of detail here. Uh, if anybody has any questions, uh, let me know, and we'll get you an answer. And we can go on next slide. And, um, so that is our month of May. If anybody has any questions.
Ms. Silbernagle, I think you did a great job. Counsel, do you have any questions for Margaret? Councilmember Green?
I just wanna compliment Ms. Waldron and you, Margaret, and the rest of the staff for your hard work on this. It's, it's a good report. Very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you. It's easy to read, it's good to, Green's good. Move on, right? So we like that. When we're getting more revenue and more into our expenses, it's hard to have a whole lot of questions, so. Good job. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Now, Mayor, I have a question.
Mayor Proctor Nelson?
Since y'all watch the trends much closer than, than we do, are there any outliers in there that we should look for, uh, in the, in the near future or the long-term future?
Well, uh, not that I'm aware of. Of course, that, I think that would be a question that Ms. Waldron could answer a little bit better. Um, Ms. Humboldt might have some ideas, um, but as far as I know, uh, we don't have anything outstanding, um, that we're concerned about.
Exactly what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Margaret. Good, really good job. All right, we're on to item number seven, citizens' comments. I have Terry Moore signed up to speak. Um, Madam Secretary, do I have anybody else? Madam Secretary, do I have anybody else? Okay. All right, Mrs. Moore.
Hi. The last time that I had known, the last time, that's me. Oh, Terry Moore, 4015 Patton Cove, Bassdrop. I am the executive director for the Bassdrop YMCA. The last time the YMCA had some big news, we made Trey give it to you because it wasn't the best. So I should have reverted and said, hey, Trey, you want to make this announcement because this is really good. We did feel like that, we were told that the contract on the pool and the labor and all that kind of stuff was going to happen and was going to keep us from opening for the season. The contractor got done early, so we were able to open on Sunday at 1:00. It is awesome. I will tell you that the construction included the pumps, the plumbing, the chemical feeds, new plaster, new lift chair, new handrails, new motors, new stair configuration in the large pool, and the addition of new stairs in the three-foot pool with a rail. That's big. If you've ever tried to step into that three-foot pool and just kept going, it's a big step. So we're really excited about it. We were able to open on, at 1:00 on Sunday. I have to commend my pool manager. He was able to hire staff without telling the public that we were opening, which was quite a task. But we are open swim lessons, aquatic fitness, swim league, open swim, pool rentals, and all of that's going on right now. Our pool hours for the summer will continue through August the 12th, and at that point, we'll announce what our fall hours will be. We're hoping that maybe we can stay open through the month of September. That will depend on staff availability. But I just want to tell y'all, we're open.
Those of you that were at the Juneteenth parade, saw the YMCA float and they were announcing that it was opening on Sunday. So always getting information at the parades and stuff. Thank you, Terry. That's great news. Everybody enjoy the pool. Council, we're on to the consent agenda. I have four items on the consent agenda. Is there anyone on council that wants any item pulled? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that wants a consent agenda item pulled? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll please read the consent agenda.
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, consider action to approve city council minutes from the June 12th, 2018 meeting. Item 8B, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-09 of the city council of the city of Bassdrop, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 7, titled Municipal Court, Article 7.01, general provisions to establish a municipal court of records to provide for purpose, jurisdiction, and definitions, to provide for the appointment of the municipal court judges, to provide for the appointment of a court clerk, repelling all prior ordinances and actions in conflict, herewith providing for an effective date. Item 8C, consider action to approve the second reading of ordinance number 2018-11 of the city council of the city of Bassdrop, Texas, granting a conditional use permit for brewery, distillery, or winery use on 0.046 acres of Building Block 3 west of Water Street, located at 809 Main Street, and 0.184 acres of Building Block 3 west of Water Street, located at 705 Pine Street, within the city limits of Bassdrop, Texas, as shown in Exhibit A, setting out conditions, including a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Item 8D, consider action to approve resolution number R-2018-44 of the city council of the city of Bassdrop, Texas, suspending the effective date for 90 days in connection with the rate increase filing made on about June 1st, 2018 by Atmos Energy for its Mid-Tex Division, finding that the meeting complies with the Open Meetings Act, making other findings and provisions related to the subject, and declaring an effective date. This concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Peterson. I have a second from Mayor Proton Nelson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Greens?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. All of those items are approved. Congratulations. We're now moving on to items for individual consideration. As I've mentioned previously, 9A is pulled, so we'll be moving to 9B. Consider action to approve resolution number R2018-37 of the city council of the city of Bassdrop, Texas, approving the Bassdrop Police Department to accept a grant for 20 rifle-resistant ballistic vests at a total cost of $13,605.06 from the 2018 State Homeland Security Grant Program with no matching grant funds from the city of Bassdrop, authorizing Public Safety Director as the grantee's authorized official, providing a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Chief Algelt.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, City Councilmember, City Manager Humboldt. I'm James Algelt, Republic Safety Director and Chief of Police. In September of 2017, the Bassdrop Police Department applied for the 2018 State Homeland Security Grant and requested that we purchase 20 rifle-resistant ballistic vests for our officers. These vests are vests that actually go over the body armor that the officers wear. Because of the weight, we don't wear it on a regular basis because of the fatigue that comes with that and how cumbersome they are. However, if we get into an event that an active shooter or some type of threat, the officers would have those vests available, they could don those vests and hopefully be protected more than what their normal protection is. In September of 2017, we did not have the policy for grant applications that did not require matching funds to come to the city council, so I apologize that we not bring that before you. But I do guarantee you that from this point forward, any grant that we apply for will come to you before we do that. We were scored by the Capital Area Council of Governments and were notified in January 2018 that we did receive, we were awarded this grant, and we need a resolution so we can move forward. We already have the vest outlined and identified. The grant expires in March of 2019, but I anticipate we'll have the vest way sooner than the expiration date of the grant. I'm available for any questions that y'all may have.
Thank you, Chief Algelt. I read a lot of words and just so we're abundantly clear to the public, this is costing us nothing and protecting our police department.
That is correct, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Chief Algelt, and please find as many more of these kind of grants as you possibly can.
Yes, ma'am.
Council, any questions for Chief Algelt? Mayor Proton Nelson?
No questions. I enthusiastically move to approve this. Second.
I have an enthusiastic motion from Mayor Proton Nelson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Council, any further comments? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Greens?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We're thrilled that our officers are going to be protected. Thank you, Chief Algelt. All right, consider action, I'm moving on to 9C. Consider action to approve resolution number R2018-46 of the city council of the city of Bassdrop, Texas, relating to the Bassdrop Economic Development Corporation Sales Tax Revenue Bonds Series 2018, including the approval of the resolution of the Board of Directors of the corporation amending certain provisions of the resolution authorizing the issuance of such bonds attached as Exhibit A resolving other matters incident and related to the issuance of such bonds and providing an effective date. Ms. Ryan?
Good evening. Angela Ryan with the Bassdrop Economic Development Corporation. On May 22nd, the city council approved a resolution approving our bond issuance and the amount of 1.25 million, I think it was. And since then, there was an issue with the purchaser. They didn't realize that they had to have a reserve, and so they brought it back to our board meeting on June 18th, and our board approved it. So that means it has to come back before the city council according to the Local Government Code 501.204. So we were asking that you approve the resolution as it has been amended.
Council, let me give you a little additional information on this. There was a conversation about, well, wait a minute, they answered the RFQ, they wanted the bonds, we gave it to them, and then they came back and said they had this additional requirement. And there was a discussion about whether or not we should do that. The additional requirement is setting funds aside and a reserve. It's basically like saving your last year of payments to make sure that the bonds are secured. And in the discussion, it came out that, as you can imagine, you can tell somebody, and the person who's working on it on behalf of BEDC said to them, we really don't like you changing the rules and we don't like that. And so one of the options could be that they say, okay, well, then we're just out completely. If we had gone to the second bidder for the bonds, the interest rate was substantially more. So the reserve isn't money that goes away forever. It's literally money that's reserved and it was a lower interest rate. The other thing was that because of when the original bids were done, enough time had passed that we would have to go out to bids again. And those of you who are paying attention to the newspaper realize that interest rates are going up. So although it wasn't an ideal situation, it was very much explained and agreed by the BEDC board that it was, you could win the battle and lose the war and end up paying a higher interest rate for the bonds and that it was in the best interest of the citizens to get the lowest possible interest rate. Councilmember Rogers?
I just wanted to add, the second bidder that you mentioned had a higher interest rate, they also wouldn't allow us to pay it off early. We were going to have to continue with all and not actually be able to pay it off when we had the money. So that was one of the other things to keep this one.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. So I just wanted to give you a little more background on that. So because we approved the change, we can't, BEDC has to come back to you guys, so here we are. Ms. Ryan, anything else you would like to add?
Just that this bond is for the Agnes Street Improvement Project that's tied to the Seaton Project, so that was one of the reasons we didn't want to delay it.
So this is Agnes, I know Mayor Proton Nelson, your neighborhood's real interested in that road, that crossing that would be at Hunter's Crossing to 304 behind the new Seaton Project. I think everybody's interested in options that allow them to move around town without being on Highway 71. So unless you have any other questions, I'd be happy to entertain a motion.
A move to approve.
A second. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Greens?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Nelson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. That passes unanimously. We're now, thank you very much, Ms. Ryan. We're now on to executive session. We only have one item for executive session. City council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to confer with city attorney regarding legal advice related to personnel policies, manual Chapter 1, Section 2, equal opportunity policy, and Chapter 7, Section 9, grievance procedures in light of completion of recent diversity training by senior staff. It's 7:32 and we are now in executive session. It's 8:44. We are back in regular session. There will be no action taken as a result of executive session. I move to John. I have a motion in a second. We are adjourned at 8:44. Thank you.